And now we'll hear from Assistant City Manager Fernando Costa, who will give us a briefing about redistricting options.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, council members. Ever since the current city council took office about four months ago, you've been receiving comments from many of your constituents about how the council should redraw its district boundaries. Thank you. And you've engaged in discussions with your constituents and with each other here in council work sessions and in town hall meetings and other public gatherings. And today, we'd like to confirm our understanding of the direction you'd like to take on redistricting later this year and into next year. Just as a reminder, the process that we're following now was set by the former council in adopting a resolution on April 6th of this year, accepting the final report of the Redistricting Task Force, establishing certain criteria and certain procedures for redrawing district boundaries. And the main themes reflected in that resolution were public participation and transparency, themes that the current council has reaffirmed. And so the process that was approved reflects the schedule you see on the screen. We set aside the months of October and November for residents to prepare redistricting plans and submit them to city staff for evaluation with respect to the criteria that the city council had established. And we would discuss our findings with those residents submitting district plans. Staff would prepare its own plan, drawing upon features of the plans produced by local residents. Staff would then brief the council in December. And then in January, the council would hold its own public hearing on the resident-produced plans, select an initial map, and then before adjusting that initial map, would conduct another public hearing to hear from the public. The months of February and March will be devoted to council work sessions on redistricting, with an eye toward a final round of public hearings, four hearings in paired council districts during the month of April and final approval of the 2023 district map in April of 2022, allowing for plenty of time for potential candidates to establish residency in the districts they wish to represent by July, 180 days as required by law before filing for candidacy in the 2023 election. We've also, at your request, scheduled a series of roughly a dozen redistricting software training sessions for our residents. They've been reasonably well-attended. We've seen a high level of interest in citizens participating in this process. And we've tried to arrange for these sessions to be held geographically throughout the city of Fort Worth at times to be convenient to a majority of interested residents. Now, you've listened to residents, you've discussed what you've heard, and according to our understanding, you've concluded that you want to reaffirm that commitment to public participation and transparency. You want to streamline the schedule, consistent with full and meaningful participation, so as to complete the process earlier in the year. And you want to reactivate the Redistricting Task Force and use their expertise to evaluate maps produced by residents, by the council, and by staff, to receive public comments, to conduct a public hearing on your behalf, and to select the initial map. So you would be delegating to this group of citizens the authority to select the initial map upon which the council would begin the redistricting process. And so the revised schedule that we understand you'd like to consider is reflected on the screen at this time. We would conclude the time for residents to submit proposed district maps by November 12th, about two weeks earlier than previously anticipated. It would still provide plenty of time for residents to receive training, to collaborate with each other, and to submit maps to the city. November 14th to 24th will be devoted to a briefing of the Redistricting Task Force, as reconstituted, on the maps that we have received from citizens and the extent to which those maps conform to the criteria established by the city council. In December, the task force would conduct a public hearing to receive comments on all those maps it has received and would select an initial map for council consideration. Then the council would conduct a public hearing on January 11th and then schedule a special map drawing session with 10 days of public notice as required by the council's resolution to produce a proposed map. That would be the subject of the same public hearings in early February, leading to a final adoption of the 10-district map by February 22nd of 2022, about two months earlier than it would have occurred under the process we've been following. The rest of the process is entirely consistent with what we had previously discussed with the council. The reactivated Redistricting Task Force would consist of all original task force members who are willing and able to continue their service on the task force. And we just got word moments ago, and didn't have a chance to reflect it on this slide, that Ms. Lorraine Miller, who chaired the original task force, has indicated she will not be available to serve on the task force. We had understood that she would not be able to serve as chair of the task force, but now we get word that she's not going to be able to serve even as a member of the task force because she'll be working in Washington, DC on an assignment that will prevent her from being present in Fort Worth during that timeframe, although she'll remain a proud citizen of Fort Worth, and we're proud of her for her distinguished service. So that leaves only seven of the original 11 task force members to continue serving on the Redistricting Task Force if you were to follow your intent not to replace any of the members who are not able to serve. So if you should desire to continue on this path, the following are your next steps. We would ask you, if you're interested in providing staff with your own proposed district map to serve as a starting point for discussion at your map drawing session, that you submit your proposed map to us by Friday of this week. Now, we understand, and you can correct us if we're mistaken, that Councilmember Moon is prepared to submit a proposed map, and Councilmember Williams is prepared likewise to submit a proposed map. We have the ability, and we'll be able to demonstrate it at your work session on the 21st, to overlay one map on top of the other and show where you have commonality and where you have differences, and to lead you through a process whereby you can reconcile those differences or determine in what direction you wish to go. And so however many maps you wish to submit, we'll be able to include them in the work session. If you only submit two maps, that would be perfectly fine. That would give us a starting point. You can begin to adjust the maps, and we'll have staff available to lead you through that exercise. It requires no mapping expertise on your part, simply a knowledge of Fort Worth that you bring to this activity. And as we adjust the boundaries of council districts, you'll be able to see in real time how those adjustments are affecting the demographic characteristics of the districts you would be creating. So it's a beneficial exercise that we know you'll appreciate. So the first step is to submit any proposed district maps that you wish to staff by Friday this week. On Tuesday of next week, the 19th, of your next regularly scheduled council meeting, we would have on your agenda a pair of resolutions, one to reactivate the Redistricting Task Force and appoint new members, the other formally to reestablish the redistricting procedures because there's a substantial number of amendments that we'll be making to the resolution you adopted in April. So the Law Department advised us that it might be a good idea to aggregate all those changes in a single resolution so the public can see in one place what those procedures might be. So two resolutions would appear as companions on your October 19th agenda. You have scheduled and have provided the required 10 days of public notice of a map drawing session to be held on Thursday, October 21st, here in Room 2020, as we'll walk through that process with you. It could take some length of time to produce a proposed map. And so we have sent you a meeting request so you can mark your calendars accordingly. And then the following Tuesday, October 26th, is when you've rescheduled your joint work session with the Redistricting Task Force. We have reserved space at the Rockwood Clubhouse. If you haven't had the opportunity to visit, I think you'll be duly impressed with that facility in Council District 2. And we'll have the opportunity to interact with the task force. It will be two-way communication because they'll be able to explain to you their reasoning behind the criteria. You'll be able to explain to them your reasoning behind your proposed map. And we'll be able to get a good start on the formal redistricting process to be conducted in part by the Redistricting Task Force and in part by the city council. So that's where we are today, and that's the direction in which we understand you want to go. But we're sure we can answer any questions you might have and get the benefit of your direction.
Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Fernando. Just to confirm, so it's clear to everyone listening in, those, with the exception of Lorraine Miller, those eight, or those seven remaining members have agreed already to--
They have agreed.
Okay, wonderful. And if I can also make a suggestion, when it comes to any public meetings that we have, all that, I hope that we do have Spanish translators on hand, that that material is available in Spanish so that any persons who are Spanish speakers only can be able to take in the relevant material in the meetings. Is that--
We have bent over backwards to communicate with our Spanish-speaking residents.
Good, continue. Thank you, sir.
I think everybody wants to weigh in. Y'all just go for it.
Can we take it one topic at a time? And I think we start with the Redistricting Task Force itself. And you've got eight people up there, but Lorraine is not able to serve. She'll be--
So just seven.
So seven. And it goes back to the conversation of, and the District 4 appointees probably not able to serve.
He respectfully declined.
Yep. And we've obviously had six new members of mayor and council.
Yes.
Heard my conversations about whatever task force or committee we have should represent the same, the nine spots at this, the mayor and council. And so there should be a conversation about making sure we have at least nine members of the Redistricting Task Force, allowing new members to appoint someone that they believe will be fair and transparent and represent their office. So I think that's one thing that we would like, that I would recommend that we do, is get this up to nine members. Let existing council members select someone that's up there if they want, or appoint their own. I think it's beneficial to appoint someone that's already gone through this and came up with the task force recommendations that they did, had been part of the process. But I think we should talk about the task force first before we go on to so many other topics tied to redistricting.
My question is, can you walk me through how the task force was formed initially? And then of the seven that we have remaining, I guess, whose appointments were them? Or how did--
Sure. Our understanding had been that the prevailing view in the council was to keep the task force intact by virtue of its experience and furthermore, to create some arms-length relationships since most of the current council members were not involved in appointing these individuals to the task force. Nonetheless, let me see if I can answer your question directly. The original task force consisted of 11 members, one from each of the eight single-member council districts appointed by the pertinent council members, and three appointed by the mayor at that time, Mayor Betsy Price. And she was asked to appoint three members in order to ensure that we had appropriate balance in the task force as a whole. And so if you look at the list in front of you, Ms. Miller was appointed by Mayor Price, as was Teresa Ayala, who is chair of the Tarrant County College District Board and is going through their own redistricting process and is therefore not available to continue service on the task force. Bill Schur, who is a resident of District 7, was actually appointed by Mayor Price as well. So those are the three mayoral appointments. Mr. Espino was appointed by Councilmember Flores, Graham Norris from District 3, Bert Williams from District 5. Craig Allen was the representative from District 4, and he had other commitments that would prevent him from serving. Linda Kennedy was appointed from District 6. Tony DeVito, District 7. District A was Tracy Scott, who is moving out of the forest city limits and will no longer be eligible to continue serving. And District 9 is Kent Bradshaw. So those are the sources of all 11 original members of the Redistricting Task Force. I'm sorry. The mayors three were Lorraine Miller, Bill Schur, and Teresa Ayala. So one form of direction that we would need from the council today is whether you want to retain the original task force with that level of attrition, down to seven members, or would like to consider appointing a new task force with the original members being eligible for reappointment, should that be your decision. So we would welcome any direction you could give us.
Fernando--
No, just for clarity, sorry if I'm interrupting anybody, but it sounds like Councilmember Moon's district is the only one currently that does not have a place because of his resignation. And I realize the mayor had three, is down to one. But am I right in that?
Council District 4 would not have representation. Council District 8 would not have representation.
So eight and four. So it sounds like if the will of this body is to try to maintain this task force because of previous knowledge, which felt like what we wanted to do, that the option could be for us to consider District 4 and District 8, appointing someone new, and that would minimize the changing. If that's not the will, then we're probably changing the whole constitution of the task force, which to me negates the point of moving this direction because we were attempting to keep some institutional knowledge at the table. But I'll let the rest of the members chime in here.
I don't have a dog in this fight because my person is still on the committee, but I would defer to my colleagues as to whether or not they wanted to reappoint. But I would say if we do, we should make sure that there is an odd number of people on that task force for voting purposes. So we've lost several people on the mayor's appointment. I would say that the mayor should probably appoint someone new so that way, if there's a deadlock vote, we have at least someone to break that tie.
Jared.
I would just add, I think it's important to give each council member the liberty to make appointments.
Yeah, I'm real open to hearing from the new members. And I do have just one question, Fernando, and this would be at the discretion of Councilmember Nettles. Are we, has Tracy moved, or is she still in Fort Worth, or will she be in Fort Worth?
She, according to our understanding, she anticipates moving within the next couple of weeks.
So he's got to be thinking of someone.
Can I address--
Of course.
Councilmember Williams. I hear you in that, you know, the liberty to appoint. And I know Councilman Moon is big on us getting to appoint our folks. I would, I recognize my situation is a little different than yours. I ran for an open seat, and there wasn't an issue defeating an incumbent. But I think for transparency purposes, if we maintain the folks that are still on there, it gives more comfort to the community that it's not just a mouthpiece of the current council person, that it is, we see the signs behind us that say independent redistricting now. And so I can tell you, I've never met Mr. Bradshaw. So, and I'm willing to keep him on as my appointee. And I think that adds a level of independence, so to speak. And so I would offer that to the table as a discussion. But again, defer.
No, I hear that. I just think with so much turnover that there's going to be appointments happening anyways. So, and you know, we have precedence of appointments on very important boards and commissions throughout the city. And so I think that, you know, that same level of transparency and accountability is expected in all of our boards and commissions. And so that's why I suggested that we just go ahead and do reappointments with so much turnover on an existing task force.
Next.
Carrie, was that you?
Yeah. I mean, to the mayor's point about, you know, trying to maintain the integrity of, you know, the knowledge and the conversations and where we are today, can we assess who kind of wants to keep? I mean, are we looking at just appointments from just 4, 8, and 6 at this point?
I did not appoint mine, and I'm fine leaving it for transparency.
I'm the same.
Maybe we should go around the table to see. So Carlos, you good with keeping Sal?
I've already had discussions with Sal Espino and some conversations in the past with Fernando, so yes, I would like to reappoint.
District 3, Michael, you already said yes. Carrie, what are you going to do, get a new person? Okay, you have to. Five, I'm fine with keeping Bert. Jared, we heard you're concerned you want to appoint new. Leonard, for District 7, you want to keep or new?
Keep.
Okay. And District 8, Chris, you have no other choice. And Elizabeth, you're going to keep the guy you don't know. And did I miss anybody? We done?
I think, just a little bit question, how many would they give us? To make sure it's an odd number. Who give us nine? Okay.
Well, if we add 4 and 8 as new appointments, that would give us 10. I'm sorry, no, for 7 to 9, you're right. You're right.
And so what's the timeframe for the new appointees that we would have to identify, Fernando?
Well, it's at your pleasure, but if you want to follow the schedule that we've outlined, we'd like to hear from you this week so that we can post those names on the resolution for your approval next Tuesday.
Mayor Parker, you have anything to add? I think we've heard the desires of this body.
Well done. No, I think that makes total sense to me.
So for those of you bringing in new people, get them quickly to Fernando so we'll keep these numbers in check.
So we'll hear from Districts 4, 6, and 8 by the end of this week.
Now, they don't have to follow the same process as regular board appointees, right? Going through all that background check and everything? Can they just be named?
We'll do the background check, but it will move quickly.
Okay, okay.
And we'll get those names on the resolution for your approval next Tuesday.
Okay. Any other comments on this topic? Thank you, Fernando.
I do have a comment. Just so with us going with the same process, are we still keeping this call, the task force? Or are we moving to a different name?
My, our understanding is that you would like to retain the name Redistricting Task Force.
All right.
One last question, just pertaining to the final steps of this task force charge. Will they be able to submit recommendations with the map that they present?
They will be recommending the initial map that the council would use to begin the redistricting process.
Would they be authorized to give recommendations with that? Or any, I just want to make sure that we're clear on the scope of the task force.
They would be recommending the initial map to the city council. They would not be redrawing maps. They would be reviewing maps submitted by residents, by the council, and by staff, and selecting the map that they believe best satisfies the criteria established by the council.
And just so we're clear, for the sake of staff, are we, this body, are we comfortable with the two maps that have been prepared by council members Moon and Williams? Or does anybody else plan on turning in another map? Carlos, you going to turn it? Okay. And I've already told Carrie that we'll have a competition if he doesn't draw in what I want, which is Ryan Wood. So, and I think I'm good. Okay, Fernando.
Ready to go?
Yep. Oh, sorry.
That gets us past the Redistricting Task Force. So then, the task force will review and accept maps from the public, and then this council will--
Our two as well.
Select a map and submit to the task force for, to review in a public process as well.
Yes.
Okay. And then-- And then how many maps then will the task force then review and submit back to us for review?
They will recommend one initial map.
Back to us?
Back to the council. You would conduct a public hearing to hear from the public on it. And then you could begin your map drawing process by holding a special work session for that purpose.
Okay. I'll stop there. If anyone else has any questions, then I'll have to say one other thing. Okay, I guess I had to catch up. Everyone else got it, got it clear, has it clear? I just want to speak towards, you know, where we are with this Redistricting Task Force in 2021. And having sat here for six years, what I want folks to realize is that the redistricting started in 2015. And there's been different members of mayor and council, stakeholders, of residents that have all been engaged in this process. And it started in 2015 when the decision was made to take a vote to the public on whether to add two new council members. And I didn't like the idea. I lost 100 votes. But since that public election, I've embraced that that's the wishes of the public, and I am embracing those wishes. And we've moved forward on how do we best redraw those maps that's done every 10 years. And there was two other councils that were engaged with coming up with the task force recommendations. We gave a vote to the task force on how they should proceed. And they gave us this path forward. Then another group of members of mayor and council endorsed that plan. And so I feel like this plan has been very fair and transparent and inclusive of not just where we are today in '21, but also over a time period covering six years. There has been talk about independent-- There has been talk about independent redistricting committees, and I want to spell out that no city or jurisdiction, to include Austin, is doing a true independent redistricting committee. When Austin did that a few years ago, you know, first, each of us represent a geographical district. We are not at-large. Our mayor is at-large, and then we have eight districts drawn geographical boundaries that we represent. When Austin did the independent redistricting committee, the city of Austin was going from all at-large council members to council members representing a geographical boundary. And so it's a completely different comparison for where we are and where Austin is today. They're not doing a true independent review committee, and they're 2020 census redistricting. And so I think that's an important point and education to have with our public, that they compare that apple to the orange that we're doing today. But in the end, I think we've identified through the task force the low priorities, the high priorities that should be embraced when redrawing those lines, and we're trying, we're tying it to, no gerrymandering for the high priorities, populations of similar numbers, you know, maintaining communities of interest, and then low priorities being neighborhood boundaries and school boundaries. So I feel like we're doing a very fair and transparent process and being good stewards of the process that has been laid out in front of us through the public process in 2016 and thereafter.
Any other comments, questions for Fernando? Thank you, Fernando.
Thank you all very much.
Michael Crane.
I just want, no, I'll just say this, we are continuing to do our training for vote. You had that in this presentation.
Yes, sir.
So they can use the computer program. We have people there helping them make these maps, et cetera, too.
Yes, we are providing basic training for folks who are starting from square one. We're providing more advanced training for folks who want to become more proficient. We're also providing what's called collaborations training so that even if you don't want to put your fingers on the keyboard, but just want to take part in the process, we'll have a space for you to participate. The only change we'll make is if, according to your direction, you want to complete this phase of the process by November 12th, so we will cancel the November 15th session that we had contemplated. We'll hold all the others, and Ms. Bivens, I understand we're trying to schedule an additional one for District 5...
Yes.
...to accommodate your constituents.
Thank you.
So we will continue providing this software training and encourage interested citizens to participate.
Thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Fernando.